I was very anxious when Jeff first went.
Oh, yeah, it's hard.
Good evening, welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting. The meeting of Thursday, September 13th is now called due order. First item on the agenda is a consent agenda and it includes the approval of minutes from the regular session of 8:30 2012 as well as the acceptance of ones 11 V 13 and 10 P 13. The chair will ent- if there- does anyone want to pull out anything on the consent agenda? I am going to abstain from voting on the regular session minutes only because I wasn't at that meeting. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll abstain.
Second in there, okay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, do we have a student rep yet?
We're going to be having Cole Martins is going to be our student rep and he will be attending the next meeting, very excited about that.
Is he a senior this year?
I believe so.
Already?
No, I thought he was 11th.
He's a junior.
He's a junior.
He's- I don't think- I think it's-
Oh, you know what I'm thinking of Cooper, I'm sorry who's suffering.
Oh, and Cole. He's a senior, okay.
Yes.
I just can't believe that's possible, but time flies.
That's what happens.
Thank you for clarifying. Alright, so he'll be at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, let's see, anyone from the audience that wishes to speak on any of the agenda items? I guess not. Okay, um, why don't we move up the Georgetown football discussion to now because we have a discussion about the school building committee, but there's no one here for that. So we can move you up to the front if you don't mind coming up and then we can-
And there's some information on your desk that you need to talk about.
Alright, so, just so that everyone here understands the reason why they're before us is because they're going to be soliciting funds from students on school property. So that's something that the committee has to approve. That's why they come before us. And so this is for, is it Partners for Georgetown Football? Is that still the title for it? Okay. So do you want to just give us a brief idea?
Absolutely. In the past, we have gone to all the home games, we have solicited at those for the program books, but that's basically all that we've tried to sell at them. And starting out this year, we looked at, certainly the dynamics of the home games are where we capture the biggest audience, so we wanted to push that a little bit further for Partners for raising funds and do not only the program books, but also some events at the halftime, not necessarily raise money, but more to raise community spirit, and also sell T-shirts that we had bought. The T-shirts were kind of last minute that I threw out there and that's what prompted the school to have me call you because they were like, "Oh, it might interfere with the school sales." I've spoken with them and they're looking into it. They don't think so because it's a football shirt and it's got a football on and it's not necessarily a Georgetown High School shirt. So I am talking to them as well, but in that they said you really need to just get a waiver for the year moving forward to cover this year to say that you're okay to do what you want to do.
Okay.
I'm also meeting with boosters on Monday night to talk to them about possibly putting the program book right into the shack and having them sell for us.
Okay.
In addition to us selling at the gate, just because a lot of people go up to the shack and would like to do it there.
Okay, so the boosters run the shack still?
They do.
Okay, alright, that's- I was confused on that.
Yes, they do.
When you say the shack.
The snack shack in the parking lot.
Yeah.
I believe there's an article about that.
Which is just the canopy.
There was an article in the record today, yes.
Which is just the canopy over it, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask a silly question, what might be a silly question?
Absolutely.
Can you tell me the difference between boosters and Partners for Georgetown Football?
Boosters raises money and they donate back to all sports.
Including football?
No, I'm not thinking that they do anything.
It's a very good question.
It's an excellent question, yeah.
And not easily answered, although you're correct, it's the all-sports boosters. So the intention is that it- they look at all the sports and generally speaking, what they raise money for is they buy jackets for the students, they buy the pins, they, you know, go on the jackets, they buy- they help, they don't really support the banquet so much, individual teams do the banquets, but anything like that, banners, if we have a state championship, the boosters will buy the banner. But generally what's happened in the last several years, not just in Georgetown, but in a lot of other places, is individual sports have preferred to have the opportunity to support their sport by doing things similar to what Partners for Georgetown Football is doing.
So exclusively for that particular sport.
There's a field hockey group for field hockey, the baseball teams have, you know, kind of, they don't necessarily call themselves boosters, it's more like friends of kind of, but they do their own individual fundraisers. It is something that, you know, we're trying to get a little bit of a handle on because we'd love it if everybody would contribute to a massive amount, all the money would go into a large account and then there'd be some kind of a planning group that would say, "We're going to do uniforms and here's the five-year cycle of uniforms and we're going to do this and here's the five-year cycle." So it wouldn't be necessary for individual schools, uh, sports to be doing all this fundraiser and maybe getting uniforms every two years when maybe they don't need uniforms every two years, where other sports aren't lucky enough to have a booster club and then what happens to them when they need uniforms? So it is- it is a- it is a challenge, I wouldn't say it's a problem, it is a challenge and it is something that I know Christopher Franco, you know, has been talking about too, because the boosters have had trouble, all sports boosters have been trouble getting- having trouble getting themselves reinvigorated because there's so much energy going into the individual sports that there's not a whole lot left for the- for the boosters. So it is something that I think we should really start to bring all the groups together and say, you know, what is the solution to this? Because how can we meet everybody's needs? Individual parents want to support what's going to benefit their children. So if they're contributing money or doing fundraising and then their child doesn't have the benefit, that's in the minds of parents, it's a problem. But also what can happen is fundraisers can happen, let's say you're a senior, this happened when you're a senior on the field hockey team, and until everybody contributes the money to buy the uniforms, the uniforms come in the last day of the year and you've contributed your money and your child didn't get the benefit of that. It's- it's not without its challenges. So it's something we need to continue to look at as a district, not necessarily to-
Who would take the reins on that?
Well, the athletic director is- is doing, you know, some work with it and, you know, I- I'm trying to help, we're all trying to just kind of get our handle around. There's no sense, you know, blowing it up. The governance committee for a couple of years met with the high school administration, looked at it and it's been an ongoing, like, what do we need to do if it's a policy discussion and decision? And, you know, it's just, it's- it's got a lot of threads, it's not just like saying, "This is what we're going to do." We're no longer recognizing these groups, we're only going to do all-sports boosters. It's not as simple as that.
And we didn't have an athletic, a full-time athletic director last year.
Right, so there are things in place now that I think could make that discussion help, and I think the way football boosters started was, this is a very intensive cost sport. And the- the all-sports boosters and the district did not have the money to really upgrade the- the equipment that these guys needed. I mean, they needed new helmets, they needed safe equipment, they- they really didn't have it. And so this group of people stepped up and did a phenomenal job completely outfitting the, uh, the team with really state-of-the-art, safe, qual- high-quality equipment and then it just never went back, it never disappeared. And then not only did it not disappear-
Unfortunately, in football, every year something else comes up. I mean, this year was uniforms and the sled, that was $15,000.
Yeah.
So not something you can go to a boosters club that sells food out of a shack and say, "Can you cut us a check for that?"
Exactly. So it, like I said, it's not as easy, you know, and-
It's very expensive.
Very expensive, and they- they do fundraising through their program and beautiful program that they put together, perfect, real professional-looking program, you know, so then it is the dilemma, you know, so if people want to contribute to things that benefit their children and they're more likely to participate-
Absolutely.
Do you, you know, do you eliminate that and, you know, at the expense?
I think it's a discussion that Chris needs to get-
It's a much bigger discussion.
Up to speed on what he's doing and then bring everyone together.
That's right, yeah, and certainly we can have some discussion at the committee level as to, you know, from the policy standpoint, as to what- what boosters organizations, you know, need to include and need to be charged to do.
And from Partners' perspective, we are stepping up this year and asking boosters to start that dialogue with us.
Oh, good.
It's never been there before.
Good.
We've also pulled the cheerleaders into our group, they're considered part of Partners at this point, which honestly, I don't understand why it wasn't like that, but it wasn't.
That is good.
So we've also, yeah, we've also been in contact with the school for the band, we're asking that they stay heavily involved with game days. So I think that there are a lot of dynamics to it, but it is coming together.
Yeah, no, I think that it's, that's true, Carrie, and I appreciate, you know, your help making that happen.
So what I'm looking for basically is just the freedom to do some of the events we want to do, really no liability, it's a couple of game day things. We talked about getting the flag football program out on one of the home games to do a scrimmage at halftime, possibly doing an alumni day, a senior citizens day, a rally day, all of which will be handled by Partners, not necessarily on those looking for gaining any monetary value, but more of a community value. So that's what we're looking for today, hopefully I won't have to come bother you again this year, I've been out a couple times.
One of the things that I need to research a little bit more though, and again, it will be not just the boosters, is the wellness guidelines that are coming out from the federal government and I just need to make sure, because I know they- they've changed a lot in terms of what can be served even on school grounds, even outside of school time. So we- we do need to be in compliance with that, I just, I must admit, I'm not as up to speed as to how this pert- I know what we have to do in the schools, but I'm not necessarily sure if it pertains and how it pertains to outside groups-
The other thing that-
That are working on our turf.
The other thing that we need to think about, and this was brought up before and it wasn't Partners for Football, we're talking with Peter and the school store, because at one point we had approved something and then there was a side comment made, "Well, we sell that in the school store" or, "We're, you know, how does that work?" So if we can, Peter can have that discussion too, so that we can just be clear that this is a unique, different-
I did reach out to Liz, I think her name was.
Yeah, Liz Marketti.
Okay.
And sent her the email string from Peter that they wanted me to check with her and that I could run one by, she could look at it. I'd actually love to see them put these in the store if they wanted to and sell them for a little bit more profit in the store, make, you know, make their profit off of it.
So you both make out.
Absolutely.
That's how we envisioned the school store, being sort of a merchandising center.
Right, so not a bad thing for us to sell them for 16 at a game, but a good thing that the school could maybe pull them in for $20 during the week and make some money as well.
Right.
And keep that, keep whatever profit they can make on it.
So what fundraisers are you looking to do to solicit, to sell direct to the kids?
We solicit ads in our program book, which is already underway, they're in print right now, so that's done, that's outside of the, that's really outside of the school, that's us going out into the community and asking them to run ads and parents put ads for their kids in it, so that is one. The second one is the raffle, which we sell 300 tickets at $100 apiece. We will want to sell those at the home games, or at least offer that ability for people to buy them there, but the kids really will be selling out of their homes. So they'll take the tickets home and be given the task to sell a set amount of tickets. Unfortunately, with 40 kids this year, they only sell five. Last year was a lot more.
That's good.
Those two are our biggest fundraisers. The other one is Pancake Breakfast, which really again won't be, the kids won't be soliciting at school for that, the parents will be doing that. So the only thing we want to sell at the games right now is T-shirts and, sorry, this is dirty, but an example of probably rally towels with Georgetown on them. So right now, those two things, no food, no drinks, we don't want to affect boosters' income at all, we want them to be able to do what they do.
Okay, alright. Any more questions? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to allow Partners for Georgetown Football to run a series of fundraisers throughout the school year as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carried. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. Run away.
Okay, next up is the school building committee. Michelle and Ellie aren't here, Ellie did call me and, because it's pretty much just to discuss approval of the warrant articles which deal with the FEMA mitigation grant as well as the feasibility study for the middle high school. So I'm just, the big thing is, we already discussed what the project is going to look like, MSBA asked us to go back and look at what the, what do we need to do with the middle high school, to bring it up to, it's, to bring it up to where it should be, I guess is the best word, and relieve some of the issues that we have there and then just provide for the best buildings that we can for education in Georgetown. So the first one is a warrant article for the FEMA mitigation grant, and there are two of them, each for $200,000, and we're asking the town to match $100,000 for each of those.
$100, $100,000 total. It's 50,000, they're $200,000 grants, right? And it's a 25% match for each.
Okay, that was-
So it's a total of $100,000.
Okay, so to match-
For $400,000.
So $100,000 total and it matches two grants?
Correct.
Okay.
$400,000 worth of work.
Okay. 500 worth of work? If it's two grants for 200 plus 100?
Well, it's, it's, we're, it's 200,000, $200,000 mitigation grants, one for the middle school, middle high school, sorry, and one for Pearlie.
Yep.
In order to be eligible for those grants, we have to provide a 25% match.
Okay.
And that's the $100,000. So you're going to get 200 at the middle high school, 200 at Pearlie, but we have to come up with a match, 25% match. You can, you can argue 50 for one and 50 for the other, but the total for the town is 100.
But it'll be on the ballot as two warrants or one?
Uh, one article.
One to match two grants.
To match two grants.
Okay.
And it's going to be on the ballot at the same time that we're asking the town to vote about the school?
Yep. MSBA has come up with, they ha- I can't use the word linked, and they haven't necessarily tied it together, but they're looking at Georgetown as a whole and saying, "You want to do this project, but you've also identified problems at your other building, those need to be addressed." And when I talked to Ellie today, she said, "It's not really linked because they don't know what, MSBA hasn't said what they're going to do yet."
It's uncertain.
It's very-
MSBA hasn't committed to funding the elementary school if the town approves it?
No, they haven't, they haven't committed to funding anything at the middle high school. They've committed to funding Pembroke.
Okay, they have.
So the 40 now-
Where's the possibility that they- Let, can I, just let me, let me get some facts here for you, just so we don't confuse anybody. I was just at the MSBA the other day, so I feel like I can say this pretty accurately. On October 3rd, Anne's going to probably attend on behalf of the committee, October 3rd, the MSBA full board is going to vote on whether or not they are going to support Georgetown's Pembroke project as presented.
Okay.
So the meeting that I went to the other day was a meeting with the staff to make sure we went through all the details, just to make sure that, because when they get to the board meeting, it's just a perfunctory, yes, so all the vetting of it is done before that. And when we submitted our proposal in Au- in August, the MSBA came back with four pages of questions that we have had to respond to each and every one of them, and that's the kind of work that goes back and forth with the staff. So the meeting I went to the other day was for the staff to just finalize any questions, lay out the process, and they have told us that they are planning to recommend to the full board the approval of the Pembroke project. So that's generally a rubber stamp, because there's been so much work behind the scenes getting ready for it. So October 3rd is an important date, because that is when the MSBA will, will tell us, "Yes, we approve your project." Alright, so that's point number one. Point number two is, and Ellie is correct in saying, "It's not a direct link," but what we are waiting for, and I did see, just as I was leaving my office, Katie, Katie, Katie's email from MSBA popped up, so I'm guessing that there's email that when I look at it, it's going to give me more information, but basically, MSBA has told us that it is likely, they're still discussing it, but it is likely that their approval of the Pembroke project will have at least one condition, maybe two, maybe two. Again, we haven't seen anything in writing, they've indicated us, to us in our conversations with them, that there's strong possibility that, that the Pembroke approval on the MSBA will likely be contingent, I'll say, not linked, contingent, on the town's approval of the $85,000 warrant article that you're going to talk about tonight to complete the feasibility study at the middle high school. They want to see the district and the town's commitment to ensuring that the building that they are funding at Pembroke is going to be of sufficient size and space and know that the middle high school is going to be able to accommodate the 7 through 12, remember?
Yes.
So because that study could not be fully completed by the architects because of the way the warrant article was written originally, there's a very, very preliminary list of what might need to be done at the middle high school to ensure that the spaces, remember they weren't happy with interior spaces, the special ed spaces, in order to do that work, in the spring, there will need to be another discussion with the town about the feasibility study that's done over the course of the spring.
Acting on the feasibility.
Acting on the feasibility, so if you saw that big document that was produced for the feasibility study for this project, there'll be another document, not quite as thick as that, but there'll be another extensive document that will literally be, you know, down to the fine-tooth comb, that will say, "This is what it is actually going to cost for you to do those middle high school renovations." What's not clear to me is whether or not that will be the second condition.
Right.
That you have to agree at some point to fund those renovations, not just to say-
Not to get a list of what they have studied.
Not to say the study and then just have the study and then say, "Well, sorry, we're not going to do that."
Is there any, does MSBA ever fund two projects?
Well, that's the other question, that's the other question, so I asked that question. I said, "It's, you know, that we're going to be going to the town to ask them to make a very important decision and we have to have as many of the balls coming down out of the air as we can so that they know exactly what the impact is going to be." So it would be very helpful to go into the meeting with the town for a vote and know, "Is MSBA going to be willing to partner with us on the actual, any actual work that would be done to the middle high school?" Because if it's 100% on Georgetown's dime, some people might go one way, and if it's, "Well gee, we'll, we'll share, we think it's important, we'll share 50% of the cost with you," they might go another way. So they're aware of the timing of this, they're aware of the absolute, of the need, and in fact, there's a strong possibility that someone from the MSBA will actually be at the town meeting to help us with some of this. That's still up to be discussed and decided. But it, it's not linked directly, Anne, but, but I'm telling you, I would be very, I would not be shocked, let's just say that, if there's a condition.
Condition or contingency.
Yeah. Yep. So that information is supposed to be coming like now?
Maybe.
I'm waiting.
Don't want to jump the gun?
No, no.
On anything? What happens if the town doesn't approve any of it?
Well, if the town doesn't approve it, then we, the way it works is, we, they, we have their, the MSBA's approval, if the town says no, then we have 120 days to get the funding. So we'd have, I mean, some towns take it off the docket and then just don't do anything with it, sometimes they try to go back again and make some changes, I mean, the MSBA wants to see a project here. They know, they've invested a lot in this, the town has invested $720,000 in a study, well, actually more than that with the 55, no, I guess not, I guess with the 85, it would be more than 720. But, you know, I mean, so it's a, it's a very big decision. I don't know, I don't know, you know, I think that that's part of what, we'd have to go back, we would work in partnership with MSBA, I would want to know what was the problem, you know, what, why did people feel the way that they felt about it, you know? In the next six weeks, there's got to be a lot of conversation in the community about, you know-
Right.
Why it is, what it is, how it's beneficial, you know, and it will be what it is when the, at the end of the day, right?
I mean, I'm just concerned, I've been concerned for the past month or more that there hasn't been anything in the record about it, other than the organization that's forming to fight the approval of this.
Right, and organi- I mean, pretty much an organization needs to be developed outside of the school committee and outside of the school building committee to-
Promote it.
To promote it.
I know the building committee worked extensively the other night till well after 10 o'clock, trying to come up with answers, collective answers to fact-based questions, you know, anticipating, well, what kinds of questions would the community have and what's the background information that they need to know in order to, whatever way they decide to make an informed decision.
Right.
I think there still needs to be a lot of more discussion about what's the financial impact.
Absolutely.
And it, you know, the difference between an operating override and a debt exclusion and, and how does it actually affect, you know, people in their own personal circumstances?
Absolutely.
And I think the other question that I'm afraid that we can't answer right this minute, but the town needs to kind of continue to talk about this, is most people, you know, have said, "Okay, I understand, you know, the need for a new school," and in many towns, the MSBA said that there's only been a couple of towns where buildings have been turned down. At the end of the day, there's lots of discussion, lots of debate, lots of, you know, divisions in towns, but at the end of the day, they, they've supported projects because it's infrastructure and it's, it's something that they can see the long-term value and benefit.
Right.
Separate from an operating override, you know, that's a very different situation in people's minds. They said that, you know, it's generally supported, but there's no doubt that it's a big ticket and people have to understand exactly how it impacts them and impacts, but the long-range plan, what they keep saying to me is, "But what's next, Carol?" So Elm Street improvements, what, what's coming down the road, right?
Right.
So, so I can support the school because I think we need it, but what do I have to worry about, you know, two years, five years, seven years? And that's a challenge to answer that question.
I'd like to take this opportunity before I forget to, it's, it would be, I think, a great idea if the selectmen, this is a project that is quite large, it's going to impact the town for, this will be gone, and-
It may not be.
To get as many people at a town meeting, and it, it would be a great idea if the selectmen could request the committees, the various committees, request the townspeople to attend a special meeting at the high school for a Q and A, for an education of this. And the reason I wanted to say that before I forget is that the building committee doesn't have that kind of position with the town as the selectmen do, and as the leaders of our town, I think it would be a, it would be a great way to start to educate everybody coming from them, so I wanted to share that in public.
It's very different to read a fact sheet than it is to have an opportunity to have interactive questions.
To have a dialogue, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, maybe that's something that maybe Anne could drop, David a note and just make that as a suggestion.
I mean, there actually have been a number of community meetings held by the-
Yeah, there have been.
By the school building committee.
They have.
And they've been very informative.
Yep.
But they, I, are, they were working diligently on a fact sheet and hopefully that will be something that will be available to the public through the school website, through the town website, once they fully develop it.
We have another meeting next Tuesday on the fact sheet to hopefully finalize it.
Oh, good. Yes, I understand as possible.
And I believe there is a committee that is going to undertake, you know, the educating the public, and they have a schedule in mind, from what I understand.
That's good, that's good to know.
And if you have friends that want to join, feel free to, feel free to have them join and they can use all the help they can get.
I mean, the FEMA mitigation grants are really important and I, I'm hoping that the town, you know, can see their way through to support those, because, you know, without those, you know, doing anything to like the middle high school first floor is like throwing good money after bad, because there's moisture in the building and that's, that's never going to be fixed, you know? These, this, these grants are going to actually get at fixing something that is going to be and has been a longstanding problem. And it's one of those central things that, if you don't fix that, it's like a roof, if you don't fix the roof and it keeps leaking and then you keep replacing the tiles inside, that doesn't make sense, that's, that's just not right.
Would it be essential?
So this is a cen- is an essential infrastructure improvement that is, is very, very much So this is a cen- is essential infrastructure improvement that it is, is very, very much needed.
Absolutely.
So I think you're trying to just vote on whether or not the school committee wants to.
Include the two warrant articles.
Wants to support the inclusion, right.
Absolutely.
All right. More questions, comments? On the warrant article? All right, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the, approve the inclusion of a warrant article on the two thousand twelve Fall Town Meeting. Agenda to ask the town for one hundred thousand dollars, which will match two FEMA mitigation grants each for two hundred thousand dollars. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is, um, the DRA architect, um. Fee to do the feasibility study for the high school. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the inclusion of a warrant article on the two thousand twelve town meeting. Agenda to pay DRA associate architects eighty-five thousand dollars to complete a feasibility study for the Georgetown Middle High School.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we have one more warrant article which is not included in here that we want to include. Um, at this, one of the things we talked about in the spring, um, when we're going through our budget. Was in our budget, we included all the special education costs that we knew at the time. And what we could reasonably predict was going to happen with the students that were, um, requiring special education. Um, programs, outside placements, services, whatever the issue was. Um, at this time, we've identified a few costs that have come up that we're likely to have to go ask the town for funding. Um. In, you know, for confidentiality, we can't discuss who it is, um, and we cannot, and we don't have a firm number right now. There's a couple of things that Carol's working with Donna straight on.
More than one.
And it may, at this point, there's several issues and we're just trying to. With many balls up in the air, trying to understand what could come to fruition, what's not gonna come to fruition and what we really need.
Got a placeholder.
So what I'm asking, what I'd like the committee to approve is including a warrant article on. Um, just like we just approved, but for special education. And we'll have a number and we'll discuss with the committee what that number means in executive session. Right now, we have no idea what the number is, so we're not at a point to discuss it, but I just wanted to see. If you all agreed or had concerns or comments about either putting it on or not putting it on.
I one hundred percent agree with putting it on.
I mean, the board of selectmen makes the final decision, but you could make, you're, you're, you're suggesting you wanna make the case for it.
Yes, right, that's what we're, that's the word, yeah. Okay.
And I, I'd like to think the finance committee would welcome it.
Um.
We need to meet the kids, the needs of the kids.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, and with our budget and what's kinda important for everyone under, to understand is. A lot of districts, when they do their special education budget, they'll put placeholders in. They'll say, uh, look at the cost, the average cost of an outer district placement, average cost for transportation. Um, average cost for, um, aides in the district or. Behaviorists or other specialists that we might require and we'll put money in to accommodate those needs if necessary. Our budget is tight, we, we don't have any of those placeholders. So we can't sit here and say, all right, let's do this and we used to go to choice. So the reason why this discussion's coming up this year is we used to go to choice, we used to move things around and make it work. We're at a point now where we don't have that ability.
Nothing to move.
There's, yeah, there, there isn't anything to move, so, um, I'd feel comfortable. I know that we can support it, I just wanna make sure the board is comfortable moving forward with that. Um, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the inclusion of a warrant article on the two thousand twelve Fall Town Meeting Agenda. To pay for, um, special education expenses to be determined, um, and discussed with the committee.
So moved. A second.
Any further discussion?
Will figure out the wording in executive session?
No, we'll figure out the wording closer to, when we have more information.
We'll figure out the dollar amount. Uh, Carol will present us with the dollar amount, we'll discuss the dollar amount. It will provide the dollar amount in regular session. In executive session, she will provide us with general information about. Where, where, has, why we're doing this.
So we can just create a place?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't have to be filled with something.
Correct.
Well, it will be filled with something. It's not gonna be filled this very minute, cause we don't have the language, right, we need the language.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'd rather have it on the agenda and pass over it than not have it, because this is the only time we can go to the town.
Yes, absolutely.
For the money until the spring.
That makes perfect sense.
Pass over it if something happens.
And, and I'm hopeful we can. I'm hopeful it's gonna be something that we can just walk.
Yes.
Walk and pass over. All right, did we, we already voted, right?
Nope.
No, we didn't.
And now we're.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
PM second.
I seconded, yes, I did.
Yeah, I did get the second.
Sorry.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is the superintendent's report.
Two quick things, um, it's always a pleasure to recognize students, um, and last year we had a senior, Michael Johnson. And he received a thousand dollar scholarship from the Charles Wab Foundation, uh, in recognition of a high score. Uh, on the National Financial Capability Challenge. It was an exam that students were encouraged to take. And he did very, very well, so well that, uh, it qualified him for a scholarship. But the other nice thing about it is this is one of those scholarships where, uh, a matching donation is also awarded. To the Georgetown Public Schools, um, and obviously, you know, it's a pleasure to accept the donation and. The formality is you need to formally accept it and we will, um, we will send a, a, a letter to, um. Michael, you know, from obviously congratulating him on his award and, you know, thanking him, you know, for, um. You know, his contribution on behalf of the school district. And then, um, we have to, we don't have to decide what to do with that, um, money. Uh, although it's going into the donation account and I would suggest that we, um, have the donation, it, it go to the middle high school. Something at the, at the middle high school that they would like to use the donation for. So I would urge you to accept the donation with gratitude and congratulations to Michael.
And we do that at the end, right?
You can, Anne, you, you can do it under new business or you can do it now, it's really up to you.
And we'll just do it under new.
All right, great.
I, can I ask you a question about that and if, could that thousand dollar matching donation be used as like a scholarship in his name? To be awarded to like, to a senior?
Well, I guess we could determine that you wanted to offer. It, I mean, it would be a one-year scholarship.
One-year non-renewable and it would benefit only one child.
Yeah, I mean, you, yes, I mean, the school committee always can identify a scholarship and, you know.
I'm not sure if there's limits from the company on it, whether or not it can be, you know. I don't call it regifted, cause that's not really the right word, but you know, I don't, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know Barbie, we can look, we can certainly look into that if you'd like to know more. Otherwise, I would just suggest to go into the donation account and be able, you know, Peter's trying to raise his money for a sign, you know, his electronic sign. So he, he might appreciate that extra thousand dollars.
Though it would benefit, you know, a bunch of students who are putting into that fund, so that's fine, it was just a question.
Yeah, good question, yeah, no, it's a great question. Um, and then the, the next item, um, I know there's, I don't know if the records got an article in it about it, I guess I haven't seen that yet. But, um, I know there was discussion and I was asked for a quote, so I know there was an article being published, um, the Boston Globe Magazine. Or, sorry, the Boston Magazine, not the Boston Globe. Um, once again, for the second year in a row, recognized Georgetown as one of its top best. Schools and districts in the state. Um, this year, they recognize, they recognize high schools, in the past, they might have done districts. But this year, they focused on just high schools in the greater Boston area. And I, I did include the, um, article, cause I think it's, it's very interesting to read the whole thing and how, how they rate certain things. But just for the public's benefit, um. Uh, on a table in the, in the, um, and we should probably put the article up on the website if we haven't already attached the link. Um, but they looked at criteria such as enrollment, student-teacher ratio, graduation rate. Percentage of students going to college, tenth grade MCAS scores, average SAT scores in reading, writing and math. Percentage of students scoring proficient, which means a score of three, four or five on AP exams. The number of varsity sports and the number of clubs. And overall, our high school ranked forty-sixth in the state. The interesting thing, or I guess the most, um, it's something that's really quite, really impressive, I think, is. They basically were in the top ten in all of the schools that were rated. Uh, in the percentage of students who took the AP exams and scored a three, four or five. Um, once again, you know, this is excellent news for our high school and for our entire district. You know, as I said to the teachers on the first day, you know, the high school deserves a tremendous amount of credit. They, they, year after year, you know, have, you know, have students performing at high levels. Uh, but, you know, it's a cumulative process and so it starts even at the kindergarten level and it is about, you know, how do we. Uh, give students opportunities throughout the, throughout the district to, to do well and, uh, come to the high school and, and be able to perform. And be competitive with their peers. So I, I do think it's important for the public to, to know that we did achieve that ranking. Last year, we were forty-eighth in school districts. This year, we're forty-sixth in high schools. So.
That's great, it was interesting, it was very interesting.
It is very interesting and when you really have the chart and you take a look at it and you see, you know, sort of, you know, where, where groups fall. I mean, we, we don't have as many sports and clubs, but we're a small school compared to some of the schools that are on this list.
It's interesting, when you look at the number one, which is Weston, our enrollment is actually higher. They spend twice as much.
Yes.
Um, on per pupil spending. Uh, our gradual, our graduation rate is two points lower. Percent going to college were three points lower.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we score much better, what's interesting I found was we score much better on the AP exams than they did. But we're almost a hundred points across the board lower on our average SAT scores.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just, I don't know what the relationship between the, the AP.
Interesting.
Yeah, I, I don't, it's just kinda.
AP being advanced.
They are two different, you know, I mean, they're both measure aptitude, I guess, but they are two different.
Yeah, they're, they're two different tests. And then they have, um, twice as many varsity sports and three times as many clubs as we have. So we do a lot, but.
Yeah, yeah.
It's interesting.
I mean, I think that, you know, most people that have spoken to me about it have said, wow, you know, I mean, the most remarkable thing is how well our students do. In, in many of these categories in relationship to how, you know, how much money is spent. I mean, there's nobody else on the list, there's nobody on the list that's less than ten thousand dollars a student.
Yeah, we're almost twenty percent lower than our next person.
Right, so I, I know that I've, I've asked, been asked this by many members of the public, you know, so why don't people come and talk to you Carol about what you guys are doing here? You're doing so well, you know, and, and you don't spend as much money and I, I usually, um, remind them that. I think the, it's, well, it's true, but I think the important thing to remember is that the, the money we spend, we spend on the classroom. We, we focus our, our money on the classroom. Now, we don't have up-to-date technology. We don't have, you know, uh, as much money as we need on the facilities and maintenance. But right, we, we hire the best teachers we can find.
Excellent teachers.
Try to, you know, support our teachers with professional development and we've been, our teachers make our district, there's no doubt about it.
Who love what they're doing.
Yes.
Many, many of them.
And that's the right strategy, I, 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 I think it is a strategy that's worked well for us and. And, uh, served us well.
Partly hurts you too.
Yes, it does.
It's a double edged sword.
It is a double edged sword, of course, it is, it is.
We've talked about that many times.
Yes, it is a double edged sword.
Question is how sustainable, we hope that it's.
Well, the, well, no, see, here's the issue. I mean, and we're facing it right now with Pembroke. I mean, not, I mean, we've done as best as we could maintaining Pembroke. But the question becomes how, you know, what, what are we gonna do if that doesn't pass? And then what are we gonna be faced with on an ongoing sustainability?
Right, if our fifth graders don't have a lab curriculum because they don't have a lab.
Right.
Which puts them at a disadvantage.
Yeah, or at, update, up to access to updated technology.
Overcrowded and we did have a lab, but that has to be used for classroom.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So anyway, I just wanted to share the great news with the committee and with the public. Um, and you know, it, it's always like, you know, so we hope next year and the year after and the whole sustainability thing. But, you know, every year, we, you know, we do what we feel is right and best for kids and. We're very proud of the accomplishments of our staff, students, staff and students. And, and we're continuing to, continuing to develop plans to, uh, make improvements in places that we still need to continue to improve.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job.
Yeah, congratulations to the staff, they, they, they do the work, the hard work every single day. And then I, I think I just included for your benefit, the, uh, comments that I made to the, to the staff.
Mm-hmm.
On the first day of school, so that's just for your, for your information.
All right, any questions on the superintendent's information for the committee? I just had one, is our enrollment down? I always use sixteen hundred as my number and now we're a little below sixteen hundred.
Pembroke is up.
Is Pembroke down?
Is up. I know that.
Pembroke is up. Uh, you know what Anne, let, let's, um, let's look at, let's do like a little comparison of that.
I'd just like to see that, only because I always thought that we were, I thought it was sixteen thirty-three was what stuck in my head. Um, so.
Yeah, these are the students who showed up on the first day of school, basically. Um, so, so look into enrollment comparison.
Yeah, that's what my, yeah.
Sixteen thirty-three versus.
Remember, we did, we did say that our kindergarten and first grade numbers were down, remember? This is the start of that sort of trend.
Okay.
Um, now, at Pembroke, this year, they got twenty new families. So, you know, and that's.
Seventeen or, or you just rounded?
I think Donna told me there were twenty, but you know, it, it's between seventeen and twenty.
Wow.
Um, which is a lot of new families and there are a lot of, there's a lot of real estate for sale, so, you know, that, that trend could continue.
Yes.
Yeah, if we could just look at where we were last year, that's what I'm gonna do.
Um, all right, financial, do we have a financial report?
We didn't have any financial report today, that's why Joan.
In the habit of getting like a quarterly financial report or monthly, how are we?
I think Joan, uh, either way, Joan is, I just talked to her about that today. She's happy to put in, we had been for a while putting in the monthly report, the second meeting of the month.
Yep.
Uh, and, you know, she's certainly very willing to do quarterly reports, like, you know, like we've done, whatever, whatever way the committee would like. You know, synopsis of the information, she's willing to do it.
All right.
If you'd like her to include the monthly, you will have some transfers next meeting.
Yep.
Um, but if you'd like her to include the Munis monthly, uh, report, uh, at the second meeting, happy to have her do that.
Budget and finance, are you okay with that, if we get the?
That's that thick report, you remember with all the different lines?
And it show, what it does, she encumbers or commits the money that we're gonna spend. So we know what, even though we haven't technically spent the money, we know it's already committed. And then we know what's left over, so we can kinda track where we're going.
Yeah.
And it's just nice to see.
Yeah, the reason.
And then you can look at the different line items to get a good understanding of where we're falling short or where we may have access.
She's still making some adjustments because, um, the payroll office encumbered the money with the town.
Right.
For individual people, but that, she, she encumbered the money for the people who were here last year.
Okay.
So there are some changes in staff that need to be tweaked and adjusted and right now Trish is doing a payroll, so it wasn't a good time to.
Yeah.
Kind of ask her to, to do that, but we definitely will provide that. In the second meeting, right?
All right, subcommittee reports, budget and finance. Barbie, Rob?
Uh, we had a meeting this evening, right before, um, this meeting and, um. It was Rob and I and Carol and Joan and she went over the, um, audit through, uh, June twenty-eleven. And everything looks, um, looks like it's not an easy fix, but.
Were there a lot of exceptions, like, you remember last year the?
There were nine findings.
Nine findings, oh, okay.
Yeah, and for the most part, they seem that Joan understands what they are and how we can fix it.
We're gonna, we're gonna put it in your packet for, um, next meeting.
We're gonna get it next time, okay, I'll look at it next time.
We'll do a summary.
Okay, perfect. I jumped the gun.
And I'd add to that, the, um, punchline was that it appears for the, uh, two thousand thirteen budget that, uh, we're all right. We're not running any deficit at this point in time.
Um, where, have we looked at net school spending for thirteen yet, to see if we're?
I don't think it's available yet, yeah. I don't think that calculates in, okay.
Uh, you know how we can kinda do a calculation to make sure that our spending for thirteen is gonna be what it needs to be?
I don't think we.
Yeah, usually we forecast what.
I'll, I'll ask Anne, I, we didn't discuss that?
Yeah, cause, um, Terry used to be able to at least kinda do a look forward and say. We're tracking to be at net school spending. The reason that becomes an issue for us is because we're so close to the bottom. If we don't spend enough, then they can force the town to give us the money and then they can levy penalties. So, that's why we need to be.
We, we will certainly look at that, remember.
We need to be sure we're at that number.
But the override helped us. The override made a significant difference. We, we used to really be like, like Anne said, skating and. I mean, like, we were actually below two years in a row by fourteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars. But the override, you know, if net school spending was thirteen million five, right, we were, we were about fourteen million plus. Yeah, by the time the town figured in all of its, all of its.
So that one carries for a year, so I don't know the differential of how it creeps.
Yeah, I don't know either, so, so, uh, look forward to, um.
Net school spending.
Tracking.
Forecast.
For net, net school spending forecast, okay. Okay, I, I have that on the list, so. We'll take care of that.
Governance, Barbie, you're up again.
Uh, governance, we met last week, Pam, Carol and I, and as you can tell from your packet, we're busy.
Yeah, you guys are gonna be busy this year, I think.
Yeah, I think we will be, which is good, which is good. Um, so there's things in the packet that, um, we have to.
That we're gonna approve?
Yes.
Did you get a chance to talk about the public use of private funds? Are you at a point where? Are you at a point where you're gonna bring anything forward to the committee, or are you still discussing that in governance?
No, we did, we finished the discussion and, um, we got the verbiage down.
Okay.
You sent that to us. I'm, I'm having a problem with my computer.
Were the, the subcommittee gonna review what you put together before we presented it to the?
We don't need to discuss it, we can wait till the next meeting, if that, that's fine, okay.
Yes, and that process, that would be a policy, and that policy would have to go through the three.
The three.
Three reads.
Three readings.
Okay.
Yes.
And was there one more governance issue?
That was the last one.
Oh, yes, there is. Uh, Naomi looked at our complaint policy.
Oh, public complaints.
Public complaints. So, that will be next, thus the next governance meeting.
We didn't, did we schedule, um, we did not when we left, but we will.
Yeah, and when, when we do, um, schedule that, then, you know, maybe Laura and I will co- will coordinate with Naomi because she pro- if she wasn't feeling that the policy was as effective as she recommended, she probably has other policies that she's familiar with that she would recommend that we look at.
So before the meeting, you might wanna just have Carol and Laura have her get back to you with what.
Naomi, the attorney was very helpful.
Yes, very helpful.
She is.
Yes. Public comment at next meeting. Public complaints at next meeting for governance.
All right, public relations.
Pam? Um, yes, uh, well, we have now met three times, um, and this is Rob, Carol and I, and Barry Belanger has been joining us. Um, we are working on a district communications plan with three elements to it. Uh, but at the moment, we're highly, we're focused on the district upgrade and update and looking at, at that right now. Um, Barry has created a, a test site, which is absolutely fabulous. Uh, we are, but we're still looking, looking at it. And we were hoping that the school committee would be able to, if you have ideas about the ten most important facts, we want the public to be able to get, you know, the information that's most important to them very quickly, easily. We want it user-friendly, clear, professional. And so, you know, we have our ideas, Rob and we, of what the public, what's most important, but if you all had ideas as well, we would, you know, it would be helpful to have them.
Can I, like, when you say ideas, like, when I, sometimes, like, looking for something on one of the websites and I can't find it, can that be an idea to, like?
Yes, yes.
I mean, it can be a category, it can be a fact that you just think is really something you go to look for often, a lot of people do. What's important?
Okay.
Can we shoot that off in an email to both of you?
Absolutely, yes.
And, and I would, uh, say.
Cause we wanna be sure we have it off.
For, for the public that's watching also, that, um, any, uh, questions or, you know, what they think, um, is important to them about the schools, you know, what do they wanna know about the schools? What are the top ten most important things that they wanna find on the website, that they wanna get information on?
If they're going to the website and not finding something, what is that?
Please send those into, um, the general mailbox?
Hmm, I would say send it to you and, you and Pam, yes.
And your, and your emails are on the, on the website.
Yep, that's right.
On their school committee tab.
And they're on the website.
Yes.
Now, I was just wondering, um, cause it seems to me like this year, the information I wanted at the beginning of the year is something I only needed once, really, at the beginning of the year. And then it doesn't need to be so prominently displayed on the website, but I'm sure, actually from discussions, I'm sure I'm not the only person who needed certain information at the beginning of the year that was not available on the website.
Yeah, that's what we wanna know. That's what we wanna know. And any thoughts you have about that?
I have an idea for that, of something that I saw.
Anything like that.
Yes, but I'm very excited, I think, you know, once it goes online. And, and a website is kind of a living, breathing entity. It, it's a work in progress, so, I mean, we can, you know, right. It's a continual work in progress and, you know, we, we want the public to feel comfortable with it. Um, we're also, we're beginning to work on, um, a, a district brochure for parents, new families. I found this old brochure from two thousand four, which has a lot of great ideas in it and, you know, you might update it.
I saved it.
I save all kinds of things.
She saves all kinds of things.
It's very well done. I'm not sure about the black and white, but, you know.
An oh-four though.
It's, this is, you know, it's just what we're looking at and working at, again, to better inform the public and, and people who wanna learn more about the Georgetown Public School District.
And we'd like to do something like a, you know, email blast, like continue, we were looking at Constant Contact as one option. Um, something just short, snappy little things that are just informational, that go out on a regular basis. Um, again, we're, we're trying to concentrate on the website first and, and then we're still researching what could possibly. Because whatever we do, it has to be something we can manage, because if we can't manage it, it won't be current, it won't, you know, people will get discouraged. It's gotta be something that is useful, you know, easy to manage.
Consistent.
Consistent.
Timely.
Timely.
You could hand it down, you could hand the format down to somebody and they could pick it up.
Yeah.
You're not gonna be inventing the wheel.
User-friendly to department heads as well as parents that are, so there's a lot to consider.
Yep.
Not, not now to get into it, but maybe at some point the school committee, um, would be willing to talk about, um, depending on how important, uh, we all think public relations is and getting the information out, um, with the web, website, that, uh, maybe there's a position that is created and becomes part of the budget, um, not a full-time position, but somebody who is one person who's in charge of that system. Um, right now, it's, uh.
Barry? Well, no, the problem is it's everybody and it's, yeah.
So, Carolyn. Yeah, with input from everyone else.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, um, negotiating? No, the, follow-up for Carol, though, where are we with that contract, teacher's contract?
Okay, the teacher's contract is, uh, at the, um, stage where it's being, um, typed up.
Okay.
And then my understanding, most recent conversation with Joe is that, uh, Joe Patella is that, uh, he's expecting a draft like very, very soon, uh, of which the group of us will review it. And then, once, you know, it's all reviewed and agreed to, then it would go and be available and published.
Okay.
So, it has taken a little longer than we had all hoped, uh, and anticipated, but there were a bunch of glitches that, um, glitches from, um, the point of, the, the, uh, perspective of the person who's doing all the typing, logistics and getting it.
Okay.
But, uh, we're looking forward to having it in people's hands and, and we, we will, this is the year to negotiate with the GISA, the Georgetown Education Support Association, aides, tutors, and generally, we, they either send us a letter, uh, usually it's they send us a letter in October-ish saying that they're interested in starting the process and then the negotiations group, you know, would start, uh, meeting to.
How long is their contract?
Their contract is, well, that, that's up for discussion, but usually it's three years. Usually they're three-year contracts.
All our contracts are three years unless we negotiate differently.
Is that the only one up this year?
And me.
And you.
Yeah. Do you send us a letter?
She just did.
I could, I guess, if that's required.
No, um, okay, let's see. Um, old business, Pam, was that public relations? We had old business listed and, was, did you cover that?
This is the tens.
What you're covering, okay. So, pretty much the four of us, three of us need to send you our top ten things and things we want on there.
And even if you just have one.
Right, just to be sure that we cover it all. Okay.
I know, ten was asking for a lot.
Ten was a lot.
Like, ten!
When we get a.
I bet you could rattle off ten things just like that.
The first five come fast. The first five come fast.
Okay.
Pressure.
Let's see, new business, we have a bunch of policies to go through. And Pam just brought up a good point in that the website is a living and breathing document, so is our policy manual.
Yes.
Ann and George went through a huge effort and undertaking several years ago to actually establish our policy manual. So then, once it was established, we set up a review cycle, so it gets reviewed every year. And as we go through the policy, even if it has recently been adopted or we haven't reviewed it for a short while, we find that things change. So it, it, like, the website is living and breathing and we're constantly updating and revising. Um, so, that's why we have ten adoptions tonight. So, I will go through, we'll go through each one and approve them. And because they're revisions, we don't do three reads, we just approve them now. When we get a new policy, which might come before us within the next one or two meetings.
Okay.
It's presented at one meeting, read at a next meeting, and then approved at the third meeting. So that's why, that's the subtle difference. All right, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve revised policy AC, non-discrimination as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Laura, thank you for highlighting.
Yeah, it's very helpful.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the revised policy ACA, non-discrim- non-discrimination on the basis of sex.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the revised policy BEC, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is emergency plans. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the revised policy EBC, emergency plans as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, um, any opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve revised policy GBA, equal employment opportunity as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the revised policy GCF, professional staff hiring as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the revised policy IJ, instructional materials as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve revised policy JB, equal educational opportunities as presented.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Second.
Oh.
Oh, aye. Sorry.
You'll be the first and the second. All those in favor?
It gets repetitive afterwards.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve revised policy JBA, student-to-student harassment as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carries. The chair will entertain a po- a motion to approve revised policy JFBB, school choice as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve revised policy JLC, student health services and requirements as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next, um, just so that everyone's clear, the reason we go through those quickly is cause it's assumed that everyone's read it and if they have questions, you bring it up when you.
I think, can I also add that it's at the recommendation of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees that we are changing these?
Right, and this is all vetted out through governance, so it's assumed that you've gone through reading, looking at MASC and saying, okay, does this make sense with what Carol's saying?
And for the public, if they wanna just get a rough sense of what the changes were, is there a way they can do that by going on the website? Or is it, the document shows up and you don't see what's changed?
It shows up on the, on the, on the, uh, in the policy manual.
Yep.
Did, did you want that?
I mean, if they have any question.
If they have questions, it is.
I mean, generally, generally, most of those policies, it was the inclusion of gender identity.
Gender identity, that there's no discrimination by, for gender identity.
I think that's great, just all of a sudden now people understand what kind of we just.
Exactly.
Um, all right, as Carol noted before, um, we had a donation made to us from the Charles Schwab Foundation as a result of one of our students achieving, um, or receiving a scholarship. And they donated, um, a thousand dollars to us, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the one thousand dollar donation from the Charles Schwab Foundation with gratitude.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Janice?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, once again, another donation, um, and that's to the athletic department, and it's from Mr. and Mrs. Thompson, um, who have donated, um, a thousand dollars to the athletic department in memory of their son Patrick, who was an alumni of the Georgetown Middle High School. And, um, they've done this, they have held, they have held several events, and they've done this a couple times.
Yes, this is not, this, this, this is a couple who have, uh, done this sep- for several years, at least, at least a couple, but maybe three.
At least a couple of years, yeah.
Um, and, uh, you know, we're very grateful. And, uh, I know that Georgetown Middle High School meant a lot to their son and, uh, this is a, just a wonderful fitting tribute to, um, you know, to their son's memory and it's obviously beneficial to us. We appreciate it.
And it goes in the public school donation account?
It goes into the athletic.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the athletic department, okay. And I just read that. Um, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the one thousand dollar donation from Mr. and Mrs. Thompson in memory of Patrick Thompson with gratitude.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and heartfelt thank you to them for keeping us in mind, you know, because it was so important to their son. It's nice to see that. Um, homeschool family approval, we have to go through this every year with, um, any families that are homeschooling their children, and this is reviewed, Carol, the.
By the Director of Special Education.
Reviewed by Carol and the Director of Special Ed. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the homeschool families as presented for the school year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a, a stupid question. I mean, I'm not suggesting I would do this, but what can you question about it? I mean, what?
You can just ask what kind of program they're using, what, you know, what results have they had, are you?
The law requires us to gather some very specific information. Some parents go into very great detail, actually provide us with, you know, synopsis of the curriculum, samples. Others, you know, do something a little bit more basic, but we have to be told, uh, you know, obviously, the greater the student, we have to be, we have to be told what the qualifications of the person or people are that are going to be doing the curriculum. We have to be told what the curriculum actually is, and there is an expectation that it, it is linked to the Massachusetts expectations. Um, we have to also.
Is it an expectation or a requirement?
Well, um, sometimes, in cases of curriculums that are religious in nature, you know, it, you know, it, it's not, it's not the direct link, but we do encourage our homeschool families to pay attention to the requirements. And homeschool families cannot take MCAS, and we do have a number of homeschool families often that will ask, you know, can my child come in and take MCAS? And the state has said, no, only to children who are enrolled in Massachusetts schools have that opportunity. Some of our homeschool students do take advantage of some of the, some of the services like sports and, and maybe, you know, there have been situations where they come in for one class or something. We try to be, you know, have some flexibility around that, because obviously we want the best alternatives for all of our Georgetown children. And, you know, for some people, homeschooling, you know, works, you know, the best. Um, so we have to know about the qualification, we have to know about the curriculum. We do usually ask about how they're gonna, what their schedule's gonna be, how many hours the children are gonna be engaged in instruction. And then we have to know, uh, what, how they're gonna assess progress. And then at the end of the year, you know, each of the school families does submit something in writing to us as to what the year was in terms of accomplishments and what progress they can show that their children did make. And they require annually to re, re-up for the request of a plan.
I mean, I mean, it's a personal choice and so power to them. Is there any, um, track record of the graduation, uh?
Well, they don't earn a diploma, they don't earn a diploma from high school. They get a GED usually, or, you know.
So then go on to college.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes, the homeschool families often have a high success rate, you know, going on, I mean.
We, yeah.
I mean, it, our, we have some fine homeschool families who take it very seriously. You know, in other places I've been, sometimes if something's not going well in the schools, the parents will say, oh, I'm gonna homeschool them. And it really is overwhelming for them to do that. There is a lot to it. It isn't, you have to be, you have to be invested in it, you have to be You know, in other places I've been sometimes, if something's not going well in the schools, the parents will say, oh, I'm gonna homeschool them, and it really is overwhelming for them to do that, it, there is a lot to it, it isn't, you have to be, you have to be invested in it, you have to be deeply keyed into it. And, and I can say that our families that are, you know, that are homeschooling, you know, in our town, really believe in it and are doing it for the right reasons. Yeah, so I, I would do, I do respect the, the work that they're doing, because it, it isn't for everybody, I, I agree, it, it's a challenge.
Laura, did we vote?
So you just, you haven't voted yet?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, let's see, two, two thing, actually, a couple things, our next meeting is September twenty-seventh here. Um, Rob noted that the school building committee meeting on Tuesday?
Tuesday, it's, um, trying to finalize the
On the eighteenth?
Um, whatever the date is next Tuesday.
Seven o'clock, here?
Um, here, um, if not here, the second floor.
So, next Tuesday, seven o'clock, Town Hall, try the third floor, possibly second floor, but it is a school building committee meeting, they're all public, so people should attend if they're, if they have questions. Um, I forgot to ask Carrie Denly this, but did she say there's a football game this weekend?
Yes.
Home?
Friday night, she said in Revere.
Oh, it's Under the lights, she said.
Seven o'clock.
Okay, so seven
There's a, uh, I thought she said a freshman game, home on Saturday.
Okay, so, Friday night, varsity, Revere, under the lights, Saturday, home, freshman.
Mm-hmm.
So, attend if you can. Um
They crushed in, they crushed the opponent in the open.
Yeah, which is great.
It's great.
Um
Yeah, it was very successful.
All right, and welcome back to school, everybody that's watching, I hope it went well. Um, and we are going to adjourn into a, oh, yes, Pam.
Can you just say, raise one thing about the appointment of the, the school committee CPAC liaison for this school year?
You did some media about that.
Would it be possible to do that at this meeting?
Yeah, are you all set with not doing
Did you want
Were you gonna be on CPAC or not?
Pam and I talked, and that's perfectly fine, she'd like to do that.
You're okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, Barbie has, had been the CPAC?
Yes.
Rep. And Pam was asked to be the CPAC rep.
I would, I would really enjoy doing that, I'm
And she was part of CPAC before, and I forgot, you had sent me the email.
She was more than part, she was the chair.
She was CPAC before.